6:30, we're August 15, 2017. Let me call this meeting to order, determination if we have a quorum. Ms. Letizia Lopez.
Present.
Dr. Norberto Cantu.
Present.
Mr. Eduardo Ramirez.
Present.
Dr. B.
Present.
Myself, Dan Garcia is present. We do have a quorum. Uh, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. United States of America, and your republik for which you stand, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Section three, approval of minutes for the regular board meeting of July 25, 2017. Do we have a motion for the approval of minutes?
So move, Mr. President.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Public forum. We do have requests by Mr. Michael Davis in regards to Henry Clay Davis Publishing in Texas Handbook Online by TSA and give out history of Henry Clay Davis to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. My name is Michael Davis. At times I'll get a little nervous even though I'm a two-term board member for mission. So I've been what y'all have been through. Anyway, on a side note, my mother-in-law is Mary Ann Cummings. She was about a 20-year superintendent secretary in Real Grand City. So I'm proud to be her son-in-law. She turned 90 today.
Wow.
So anyway. Some of y'all know Mary Ann?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Anyway, I'm married to Ginger.
Yeah.
Anyhow, I was talking to the city of May and I was kind of going through my mind about Henry Clay Davis. I wasn't too interested because I grew up thinking that Rangers, he was a Texas Ranger, they were Rinches, it wasn't a very good thing to be. But the more I looked into it, it was completely opposite. So another thing happened. The family had a letter from Sam Houston to Henry Clay Davis naming him Brigadier General in July 1860. And we donated this letter to the Texas Library and Archives in Austin. And they told me, why isn't he in the Texas Handbook Online, which he should be? And so they sent me to UT Austin where they have the Texas State Historical Association. And I gave them all the information that I had and they worked on it through the semester in the spring. And now if you Google Henry Clay Davis, he comes out on the Texas State Handbook Online now. Very proud of that. Henry Clay was born in Georgia but moved to Kentucky when he was 18, moved to Texas when he was 20. That was in 1836 after the Battle of San Jacinto. One thing that I did find out was that Henry Clay was 25% Hispanic. His mother's father was Hispanics from Spain. So he would be considered Hispanic in this area. So anyway, it's been 150 years since his death now, 1866. When he came at age 20, he came into Austin and San Antonio area and became a Texas Ranger. He was also a surveyor. Off and on for six years, he was in the Austin, San Antonio area, surveying, being a Ranger, fighting in a few battles and skirmishes with Indians. And one time in 1842 with the Mexican Army, which is called the Battle of Siletto Creek. After that, he was in Corpus Christi. He was hired to start the wagon route between Corpus Christi, going through what was called Real Grand City now, into Camargo. So they were escorting wagons of supplies back and forth. And two years later, he actually got the franchise for that. So they were carrying a lot of freight back and forth. I think it was more legal freight, though. Maybe not for Mexico City, but there weren't drugs, that type of thing. Anyway, on 1845, he was one of the hosts for the Annexation Ball of the State of Texas in Corpus Christi. And there was Zachary Taylor, U.S. Grant, and several of those. And he was one of the hosts for that Annexation Ball. In 1846, he's in Camargo and he meets his future wife. And he asked the hand in marriage and he was given the right to marry her if he stayed in the area with her. And that's what he did. He came across the Portionada that the Dela Garza Falcons owned and started a community, Christian community, called Real Grand City. It didn't get that name until later on. Of course, he was very instrumental in also bringing in the federal post, which became Fort Ringel, okay? During that time, during the Mexican War was starting, of course, there was a lot of trade coming along through here. And he had the steamboat franchise coming to the Davis Landing also. So there was a lot to be made by none other than him, but the people that were helping him. They made the brick stores, storehouses, supplying all these soldiers. Anyway, 1850, he was a state senator. And most of y'all know that was when the Compromise of 1850 started. And we sold part of the property of Texas for $10 million to the United States government. Two of those $10 million went to the permanent state fund for schools. It is now $25 billion. So I'm proud to say he helped us here with all schools in Texas. And then there's a couple of different battles. What he was known for was General Carvajal was trying to separate Northern Mexico from Central and South America. And he went across Camargo, let's see how many there was. And then they went to fight, they were outnumbered 10 to 1 to fight in Camargo. They had fought during the day and word was that Carvajal was going to surrender. Davis went a little bit west, talked to the Carizo Indian friends he had, painted his face red, they went across on horses and got into the battle. That evening, things settled down. By the next morning, the Mexicans that had been fighting left. And during the Civil War, of course, the same type of trade was going on along here, along the border, especially cotton going towards Baghdad, Mexico, which helped build this community also. He passed away in an accident, hunting accident, 1866. Thank you for listening to me. I hope that you read the little booklets I gave. And I'm going to try to find out from the high school and the junior highs if you donated back the books to them. Or I'm going to try to get them some books if y'all don't get it back. But I did give you all a summary, so after you read the book, you'll have some type of summary and I appreciate that, okay? Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Item one, consider and take possible action on agreement between serving children and adult in need, SCAN and Real Grand City CISD for the 2017-2018 school year.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Garcia Superintendent, ladies and gentlemen. The purpose of the agreement with SCAN and nonprofit corporation is to serve the needs of the at-risk children and youth using drugs or alcohol and has a coalition to address countywide substance abuse prevention. Programs provided by SCAN are worthwhile and vital services for the students of RGCC ISD. As compensation for the services, RGCC ISD will provide SCAN with the office space and utilities. This is in-kind value at $18,000 a year. The administration recommends approval to make through the agreement with SCAN.
And just for the record, Mr. Elsal Velazquez is present as well. Do we have any discussion, item one? Do we have a motion, item one? We have a motion by Ms. Lopez on item one. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item two, consider and take possible action on agreement with Starr County Juvenile Probation Department for a progressive sanction officer.
The district has had an agreement with, for several years, with Starr County, the juvenile probation department, former Creighton County Judicial District Juvenile Program Probation Department for a progressive sanction officer with a cost adjustment. We're recommending the approval of the agreement with an adjustment on the insurance portion of it, sir. We recommend approval.
Discussion item two. Do we have a motion, item two?
I move that we approve item two with the cost adjustment as presented.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez on item two. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Lopez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item three, consider and take possible action on pay application number one for the Gruya Elementary Project.
Attach you the pay application, number one, for the Gruya Elementary Buzz Drop-Off Area at Gruya Elementary. The total for the pay application, number one, is $62,012.20. Made payable to Armin Antonio Solis Construction. It is our recommendation to pay the application, number one, for $62.12.20 to Mr. Solis. We recommend approval.
Have any discussion or questions on item three?
Is that the project finished?
No, ma'am. We're about at 30%. They are working on a wall to cover some of that dirt that was released from the building. He had been discussing with us and in touch with us almost daily with the project. They are, I haven't been up there, but I understand that that wall is partially up or complete already, where we had a concern on it.
So how is that going to affect the buses?
I believe that...
We're not going to be utilizing that area for the bus drop-off. We have already come up with an alternative plan that we'll discuss with the principal in transportation. So we'll be using the front area as the drop-off.
The front area? The front area?
The what?
No, I'm asking if you said the front area?
The front area, where usually the parents drop off the students. We already test drove the buses to there to make sure that they make the complete turn.
Yeah, they would have a hard time.
No, but we already went over and we tried it. It's going to work perfectly well, so that's what we're going to be using.
Any more questions, item three? Do we have a motion, item three? We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item four, consider and take possible action on request to participate in Region One ESC Child Nutrition Program, South Texas Cooperatives for the 2017-2018 school year.
The district Food Service Department requests approval to participate in Region One Child Nutrition Program, South Texas Cooperative, for the 2017-18 school year. The cooperative assists the local ISD in the administration of a physically sound child nutrition program by coordinating and administering all bids, proposals for such programs and in compliance with the bid laws required. The CNP will utilize bids and proposals available at the time of purchase. Annual membership renewal for fees are .35 per student, I believe, which calculates to about $3,000 a year and is based on the October PIMS report. That would be the fee. We recommend approval with the agreement with Region One, CNP.
Do we have a motion, item four?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Lopez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item five, consider and take possible action on RGCC ISD Tax Office Web Payment Process with Appraisal and Collections Technologies.
In order to better serve the RGCC ISD taxpayers and allow them other payment options, the RGCC ISD Tax Office is requesting availability of a web-based payments options. Such options will include online payments using credit cards and debit cards as well as eChecks. This service is at no cost to the district. A convenience fee of approximately 3% for credit cards or debit cards and a $1 to $1.50 fee, a flat fee for the e-check will apply to the taxpayer. If they choose to use this service with the assistance of the ACT or the appraisal and collection technologies, our current license and software company for the collection of our property taxes, we will be able to implement this feature in a timely manner. I believe that Dr. Babino asked who would be responsible for the sensitivity of the transactions and so forth. I believe that the provider or the company, am I correct? Yes, they would have total liability on any issues with the electronic transaction. Yes, ma'am. The administration recommends approval for the web payment process with the appraisal and collection technology for the RGCC ISD Tax Office.
Questions on item five? Do we have a motion, item five? We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item six, consider and take possible action on proposed tax rate that will be published in the notice of the public meeting.
The proposed tax rate to be published in the notice for the public meetings are as follows. If you look at last year's rate, we had a 117 MNO, maintenance and operations, and we had a .28140 on the interest and sinking fund, which tallied up to a 1.45140. The proposed rate for this coming year on the maintenance and operations is a $1.17 with the interest and sinking fund to be lowered to .2609 with a total of 14309. The proposed tax rate is to be published on August 16 in the town prayer and public meeting will be on the 29th for the adoption of the next board meeting. We recommend approval for the proposed tax rate to be published in the notice for the public meeting.
We have a motion, item six. We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item seven, consider and take possible action on tax refunds for the month of July 2017.
Presented is a request for approval on tax refunds for July 2017. Refunds totaling $691.43 had been requested. Attaches the summary of refunds. You have the attachment. There's any questions? If not, we recommend approval of the tax refunds in the amount of $691.43.
Do we have a motion, item seven? We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight, consider and take possible action on surplus items to be declared obsolete.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia and ladies and gentlemen. We do have some items on page 51 of your agenda to be declared obsolete. Two or three months ago, we had a bunch of items that you all declared obsolete and this is our last listing. We're planning to have an auction on September 2nd, but we wanted to be sure and get this on the auction. So we're bringing these for your consideration, these items for your consideration.
We have a motion, item eight. We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item nine, consider and take possible action on requisitions 5,000 and over in a 12-month agreement.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, on pages 52 or 53 and 54, we do have requisitions for consideration to be accepted. There's proper funding in each of these. I don't know if you have any particular questions in any of these. Most of them are just typical monthly requests from Maintenance Department and Child Nutrition Program. And there's a couple for the technology. And also copier district-wide.
Do we have a motion, item nine? We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 10, consider and take possible action on the wording of the following bids. Number 18-01, office and instructional supplies. Number 18-02, office furniture catalog bid. Number 18-03, classroom furniture catalog bid. Number 18-04, computer and copy paper. RFP numbers 18-05, Charz Medical Billing Services.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We come to you with these bids and RFP for your consideration. Bid numbers 1801 through 1804 are annual bids that are in effect from September 1st of 2017 through August 31st, 2018. Our recommendation is stated on these bids for, on page 55 is your recommendation for office supplies. We're recommending five different companies. On page 58 are the companies listed for instructional supplies and we're recommending all those companies because they all offer different catalogs so to give all the teachers and all the campuses a variety of items to look at. We're recommending all of those companies. As we continue on page 59 for office furniture, bid number 18-02, we're recommending three companies that offer the best discounts for office furniture. And same thing on 18-04, page 61 for classroom furniture. We're also recommending the three companies that offer the best discounts.
Do we have a motion, item 10? We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Ramirez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 11, consider and take possible action on Walsh, Gallegos, Trevino, Rusco, and Kyle PC Retainer Fee for the 2017-2018 school year.
Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia Superintendent Schools. Item 11, we respectfully ask for approval of this retainer fee with Walsh, Gallegos. This is an initial consultation as covered by the retainer. And at that point, they provide if we need any further consultation with or legal representation, and that's when the other charges would kick in. We have been doing this. The majority of the calls or consultations do come from our special ed department. This was presented to policy committee and administration recommends approval. As you can tell, the rate is $1,000 per year.
Any questions, item 11? We have a motion, item 11?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 12, consider and take possible action on request to participate in Region One ESC Personal Services Cooperative School District Commitment for the 2017-2018 school year.
Yes, sir. Item 12, we respectfully ask approval for this cooperative that we have with our service center, Region One. They provide through our personnel department, HR department, long-term recruitment, retention strategies, look at vacancy postings when we post them, any job fairs that are available. This is budgeted through our human resources budget and administration recommends approval. This was also presented to Policy and Personnel Committee August 9.
Do we have a motion, item 12?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 13, consider and take possible amendment of instructional calendar for the 2017-2018 school year.
Yes, sir. On this item, this item was taken to our school board April, on the school board during the April meeting of last school year. And our instructional calendar was approved, but as you may have heard, there was House Bill 441 that was passed by Texas Legislature, basically letting us know that we can't have instruction, instruction is not allowed on Memorial Day. And as you can see, Memorial Day is on May 28. It's really important for the community to know, stakeholders, parents, that this does not affect anything in the fall. This is, we're just making an adjustment in reference to this House bill. The recommendation we're making, as you can see in your attachments, if you look in January, there is a teacher work day on the 9th of January. We're switching that with May 28, which is Memorial Day. So May 28 becomes a teacher work day and January 9 becomes an instructional day. So we're just swapping that. This is, you know, in meeting with the superintendent, coming up with a good solution, we feel this is the best, that we don't lose instructional time, we just swap those two days. And of course, again, this is in reference to or in reaction to House Bill 441, which was passed in June, way after this was taken to the board. But again, it's important for our community to know that this does not affect first day of school, teacher start dates, which is tomorrow, doesn't affect anything like that. It's in the second semester. Administration recommends approval.
Any discussion, item 13? Do we have a motion, item 13?
That's a move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 14, consider and take possible action on amendment of policy DIA Employee Welfare Freedom from Discrimination, Harassment, and Retaliation.
Thank you, sir. On this item, respectfully seek approval. As you can see in your passouts, there's a couple of changes to titles and personnel. I am the, well, I am recommending to be the Title IX Coordinator. And our new Director of Counseling, Ms. Norez Coveda, will be our 504 contact. And due to the current policy, the way it reads exhibit, we recommend these changes. This DIA deals with personnel. So this is our recommendation.
We have a motion, item 14?
That's a move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez on item 14. Do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. Cantu. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 15, consider and take possible action on amendment of policy FB Equal Educational Opportunity.
On this item, sir, is the same situation except we're dealing with FB, which is dealing with students. Same changes to the titles and names with Title IX in our section 504. Administration recommends approval as seen in your handout.
Do we have a motion, item 15? We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia. Item 16, consider and take possible action on Student Code of Conduct Handbook for the 2017-2018 school year.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia, Mr. Board President, members of the board. This year was a legislative year. Legislature meets every two years. We have approximately 22 changes to the student code of conduct. We're asking for your approval.
Any questions or discussion, item 16? Do we have a motion, item 16?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Lopez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 17, thank you. Item 17, consider and take possible action on Fall 2017 Dual Enrollment Courses for Early College High School, Gruya High School, and Rio High School.
Good evening, Mr. Garcia Board President, Mr. Garcia Superintendent, members of the board, and everyone in attendance. Tonight, the Curriculum and Instruction Department requests approval for the Fall 2017 Dual Enrollment Courses for Real Grande City High School, Gruya High School, and the Preparatory. Attached, you have the courses requested and any other course that students may request if the minimum seats requirement is met. The cost for these sections is approximately $3,500. So at this time, we do request approval from the board.
Any questions on item 17? Do we have a motion, item 17?
So move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 18, consider and take possible action on Memorandum of Understanding for Project Literacy Infused Science Using Technology Innovation Opportunities Listo.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. President, Mr. Garcia. We have a request for entering into an agreement with a memorandum of understanding, our MOU with Texas A&amp;M University for participation in Project Listo. It is a literacy-infused science program for 5th grade. And we, this has gone to committee and we submit for your approval.
Any questions on item 18?
Dr. Don, I just, I think it's important for the public to know that these schools were chosen randomly.
Yes, it was a random choice and we got all 10 of our elementaries were selected, five for control group, five for treatment. It's a four-year longitudinal study, but the actual treatment's only one year. So all teachers are participating and will receive their professional development at the point at times depending on their classification. It's very good. One of the things that we wind up getting or receiving, all the technology that they're using to collect data and to use... using to collect data and to use for instruction are, become property of the district. It's under the auspices or auspice of a U.S. Department of Ed grant that Texas A&amp;M received, and we've been selected, and it really is actually a very positive thing for us, a great opportunity for us to participate in.
And the program will cover all the costs, correct?
Yes. The program provides all for professional development for all the transactions, all the equipment, all the software, everything. Thank you.
Any more questions on item eighteen? Do we have a motion, item eighteen?
I so move.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a second by Ms. Lopez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
Item nineteen, consider and take possible action on renewal of ESPED Information Management Services for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school.
Good evening, Board President, members of the Board of Trustees, and Superintendent Mr. Garcia. We ask for your approval of the renewal of ESPED, basically a computer-based information management service system that contains working documents and important records for our special education students, such as the ARDs and IEPs.
Any discussion or questions on item nineteen? Do we have a motion, item nineteen?
I so move.
We have a motion by Ms. Lopez. Do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Item twenty, consider and take possible action on request to purchase District's Web Filter Lightspeed from NetSync Network Solutions.
Good evening, Mr. Board President, members of the board, Mr. Garcia, and everyone present. Back in March of this year, we received notice that our web filter that we were using at the time, a Block's web filter, was being bought out by a company in England, and it was going to be end of life at the end of April. And what that means is that it was no longer going to be supported. That filter went dead, we were dead in the water. The reason we rely so much on a web filter is because we need to be SIPA compliant. SIPA stands for the Children Internet Protection Act, and that is one of the items that is desperately necessary for E-rate projects. Every year, we go out on bids for E-rate projects that total about half a million dollars, and by not being SIPA compliant, we risk the, being charged for those half a million dollars, which I know Mr. Garcia would have a fit. In finding this out, we went out and we researched the top three web filters that are out there, one being Barracuda. Barracuda is well-known as an email filter, but they're just coming into the web filter business. We checked throughout South Texas, and nobody in South Texas uses Barracuda. So what we did is we made some calls, we found out that Lightspeed and iBoss are the two most popular web filters used in the valley. We made some phone calls, and we asked for pricing. We're going on a three-year lease on these web filters so that the district won't get hit with a high one-time fee. Lightspeed came in at ninety-four thousand seven hundred, and iBoss came in at a hundred and twenty-six thousand. So they both do the same thing, they're both highly respected, so it is the recommendation of the Technology Department that we go with Lightspeed, that be approved, and it will be through the general fund.
Any questions, item twenty? Do we have a motion, item twenty? We have a motion by Dr. Cantu. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything on reports?
Yes, sir. Before we continue, I just want to report that I'm very proud of the staff and administration. We received the state accountability, and every campus met standards, so I would like to give a round of applause to our administration. And definitely to our students and teachers, and also we were able to acquire fourteen distinctions also, so very proud of you all. Thank you all very much.
I'm good to go now?
Yes, all right.
Michael Gano, good evening, Mr. Garcia, members of the board. I'm Michael Gano, I'm a partner with the Leinbarger Law Firm, and as you know, we're your delinquent tax attorneys, and I do come with some good news. I'm here to report for the last ten months of our collection efforts. Things have gone very well for the district. You should have a report in your packet. I'll try to be as brief as possible, but what I really want to highlight, and this is something I discussed in the Finance Committee, is that we've made some changes here with our local staff, we've added some additional team members that work this account, and we have actually conducted just over five hundred and sixty property inspections within the district. What that basically means is that before we actually go to suing people who have not paid their taxes, we actually visit their homes, we sit with them, we try to come up with some type of a payment arrangement, and I think because of those efforts and because of the staff that we've added to working for the school district, you'll see that on our collection highlights that for the same ten-month period last year, we had collected just over one point six million dollars. This year, we're at nearly two point one million dollars. That's an increase of four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and I'll tell you, I represent school districts all across the valley. We have not seen this size of an increase in any school district, so I really applaud, you know, the school, the board here, because I think because of your leadership, people are more willing to come in and believe more in the school district, and I think just about any school district would like to see a twenty-four and a half percent increase in their tax collections. So again, I think for the first ten months of this fiscal year, we've already outcollected what we collected the entire year last year, so I'll be back at the end of this fiscal year and let you know just how high of a number we got, but I just want to report to you all that things are going very well on the delinquent tax side. I couldn't be happier with our staff, Mr. Clint Brown, who's here from Rio Grande and is in the audience, but if you have any questions about how we do our work, I'd be happy to take them at this time.
And I just want to thank Leinbarger for the taking initiative. I know we put a little pressure because we thought more could be done, and I know they added two employees to this area, just for this area, and then Mr. Brown and Mr. Joel Correa, and I know that those efforts have been successful because we see the difference now, and I just wanted to make sure to give them and Leinbarger their thanks that they're due.
Absolutely. We got that message loud and clear, and I can't thank you enough for giving us that opportunity and having the faith in us for allowing us to get that done. Again, I'm really proud of the team members here. Really, I just get to show up and do the reports, but really, Mr. Correa and Mr. Clint Brown and some of the additional staff members we have, they really do the brunt of the work. They meet with their taxpayers every day, and I just want to let you know that we really do subscribe to the theory that you catch more bees with honey than you do with vinegar. So that being said, we treat your taxpayers with a lot of professionalism, a lot of respect, a lot of integrity, and I think because of that, they come to the table, they understand they have to pay their taxes, and the results do speak for themselves, so thanks for giving us that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you.
It is now seven oh eight. We'll be heading to closed session under authority of the Texas Government Code, Section It is now eight forty. We're reconvening into open session. Item A required no action. Item B, do we have a motion, item B?
And will we approve item B as discussed in executive session?
We have a motion, item B by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item C, do we have a motion? On item C.
I move that we approve item C as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. I believe there is numerous positions and new employees that we're approving. I cannot list all of them, but I want to congratulate everybody and welcome to the district. Item D, do we have a motion, item D?
I move that we approve item D as discussed in executive session.
Item D, we have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
I second.
We have a second by Ms. Lopez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. I believe there's Ms. Maria Chilar. All right, congratulate, I don't know if she's present, but congratulate Ms. Maria Chilar. Item E, do we have a motion, item E?
I move that we approve item E as discussed in executive session.
Item E, we have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item F, do we have a motion, item F?
I move to deny item F as discussed in closed session.
We have a motion by Mr. Velazquez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed.
Aye.
We have Ms. Lopez opposing, motion carries. Item G, do we have a motion, item G?
I move that we approve item G as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms., by Dr. B. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item H, do we have a motion, item H?
That's just the discussion, no? We move that we approve item H as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second? We have a second by Dr. B., I mean, Dr. Cantu, sorry. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries, and we, item I, do we have a motion, item I?
I move that we approve item I as discussed in executive session.
We have a motion by Mr. Ramirez. Do we have a second? We have a second by Mr. Velazquez. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Do we have a motion for adjournment? We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Dr. B. Meeting is now adjourned, is eight forty-three.